Brilliant, thank you. So, good afternoon and welcome to this scrutiny committee meeting of Norwich City Council. Here's the look at health, safety, look at clients in council homes, a report that's going to the extravoting cabinet, if you can round its time. Item one is apologies. I've had apologies from councillors Manny Osborne and Paul Thompson McAllister, who are being subbed by councillors Sands, Haynes and Maxwell, so welcome to them. Thank you. Item two, any declarations of interest? Any members of the scrutiny committee have any declarations of interest on the item we've discussed today? No, no declarations of interest. Thank you. Well, we're now to item three, which is the main item, health, safety and compliance in council homes. There is an exempt appendix for this item. If there's any questions or discussion that relates to exempt appendix, we will have a vote in the usual way to exclude the public. Once we've completed any discussions on that exempt appendix, we will come invite the public back into the meeting, both virtually and physically, in order to make any recommendations that the committee has today. So I hope that's clear. I'd like to thank all the officers who are here today to help with our deliberations and also to the deputy leader, also here, thank you very much. And councillor Price is here as chair of audit. Everyone has a microphone, with the exception of Shannon Page, the communications manager, and councillor Price, and if they, at any point they need to speak, they'll be invited to come and sit at this desk at front there. Without any further ado, Louise, if I could hand it over to you to just outline your report before us, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The report the members have in front of them today sets out the council's position in respect of health, safety and compliance in its council homes and buildings. It also sets out the findings of the regulator, the social housing regulator, in response to those, to the position relating to compliance. And it talks about the plans that are in place and under development to return the council to a position of full compliance. I have colleagues here with me today. Chair has mentioned Shannon Page, communications manager, Vivian News, who's our interim housing ops director, and David Gleeson, who's our interim asset consultant. And as a team, we're all happy to take matters questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. I'd like to begin in terms of members' questions. If we can have questions around points of clarification on the paper, I'm actually going to kick off with a couple of points, one of which, Louise, I know I asked of you earlier, and it relates to paragraph nine, and I was slightly confused by who owned who in terms of the acronyms. But if you could just explain how that's correct, because I still am not entirely 100% sure how that is correct.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, so in paragraph nine, we talk about the ownership of the joint ventures both NPLs, that's Norwich Homes Building Limited, and MPSN, Corporate Property Services Norwich. Both joint ventures are owned by MPS, Norfolk Property Services, and Norwich City Council.
So in terms of, this is a very minor point, but I guess a big point, when it says they're jointly owned by MPSN, it should be that they're jointly owned by MPS, so there's an erroneous 'n' in that parallel. Okay, that's great, thank you. And then I have one other question. I've lost it. Okay, so it's in paragraph fourteen. Compliance management is delivered by ACC, for ACC, by MPSN. It is ACC's understanding that MPSN will retain. I mean, given that that's a joint venture that we own, should it not be more than our understanding? That feels, and I'm not entirely sure why it's something our understanding, maybe I'm missing a point here. Should we not be absolutely 100% specific on that? Thank you.
That paragraph is referring to the contractual arrangements, and the contractual arrangements are high level. The contract sets out a high level description of the responsibilities, and there are several sub-agreements which sit below that, but that's a reference to that there are high level arrangements in that contract.
Thank you. Right, let's see some other hands going up. So councillor Galvin first, then councillor Giles, and councillor Haynes, and councillor Maxwell, and councillor Thomas, and then also Louise. Councillor Galvin first, thank you.
Thank you. It is a point of clarification about this report. Thank you for the report, and thank you for the meeting, and I'm glad that we've got the chance to scrutinise this for cabinet, so thank you cabinet members for that. It's obviously really important for us to be here today, it's a really serious matter involving the safety, potentially life threatening of thousands of tenants and leaseholders that we have responsibility for, so I just wanted to say thank you. But my point is about this paper, that I did submit a topic form to scrutiny, for in-depth scrutiny of this. I can see this paper looks at putting things right, which needs to happen very quickly, and it's happening, but I'd like to just see clarification. This does not include coming back to full scrutiny of the situation, and the cabinet wouldn't support that happening.
Well, I'll answer that from a sort of a scrutiny perspective. We have a scrutiny meeting next Thursday, one of the items on the agenda there will be to look at the work programme. And my thought process around this is we will, we're obviously looking at this item today ahead of cabinet, gives us a better understanding of where we're at going forward. I'd like to use that to inform a discussion when we look at the work programme next Thursday, in conjunction with the topic form that you've submitted to scope a piece of scrutiny work that will definitely be on the agenda. Part of your question was around cabinet support, so I don't know if I could ask one of the cabinet members to comment on that, please.
So in terms of the monitoring of progress towards compliance, the report builds that in all the way through, and set up a number of governance arrangements for that to be recorded in on a regular basis to cabinet, and clearly there's an opportunity, as the Chair has said, that you design your own work programme, and you may wish to have those reports come back to you. And I'm always happy, we're always happy to make a recommendation that any of those compliance reports, progress, as a recommendation, will go to scrutiny for consideration.
Is there a supplementary, councillor Galvin?
Yeah, just thank you for that. I think my point was that compliance going forward is the future, but scrutiny needs to look at what happened, so it never happens again, otherwise we can't be content that problems are solved. So I'd really like cabinet to support us as a recommendation, looking at it in the scrutiny session. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Water.
Well, I think what is embedded in the report, the recommendations, the funding that's required to reach compliance within the timeframe described, does exactly what you are concerned about councillor Galvin, which is to ensure that this doesn't happen again. So it's that forward-looking agenda, with provisions and the recommendations that will go to cabinet later this afternoon, which deliver on that objective.
Thank you. Councillor Giles, you're next, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of introductory questions. Firstly, a question to you, can you add this up, the formal mechanism that was followed during about this scrutiny committee this afternoon? And a simple question, introductory question for Lou, what instigated the internal review following the appointment of my third in the process? And what action was taken as a result of that review in question?
Thank you. In terms of how we came to be here today, ahead of the last scrutiny meeting, I received a request from both the leader of the council to consider this going forward, and also the topic form from councillor Galvin. At the last scrutiny committee, the committee agreed that we would take this going forward, and I worked in the usual way with officers to come up with the date, and here we are, here we are today. And then there was some further points, but Louise.
Thank you, Chair. So councillor Giles, I'm following my appointment in April, and linked to a review of corporate governance being undertaken by the chief executive. I asked the interim asset consultants, who are supporting us with project place delivery, to do a high level review of compliance management in our homes and buildings, RHI Homes and Buildings. I asked for the review as part of getting to grips with my new role, I have a housing background, as many of you will know, and I wanted to have a really clear understanding of how the council was meeting its responsibilities in those areas. So the own findings from that kind of high level review raised some concerns. Initially, that was around electrical safety inspections and some fire risk assessments which were out of date. So what we did from there is we sent out some operational meetings with colleagues at MPS to understand, begin to understand what the baseline position was, and where actually will we act across all of those key compliance areas? What actions, tasks did we need to undertake to kind of identify what needed doing, and of course, looking to do the most urgent items first, so worst first, you know, prioritising things on a risk basis? We asked Cabinet Seaton, who are a consultancy with health and safety expertise, to report for us, and Beacon Partnership, who have fire safety expertise also, to report back to us also. So in July, as a result of the emerging information, the detail that was coming together, we made a decision to make self-referral to the regulator of social housing, and at that point, we began working with the regulator to provide more information, and for them then to consider whether or not the council was in fact in reach of the home standard. And you'll know their findings concluded in October. The table on page fourteen in the report gives a high level overview of the kind of actions that have been taken so far. So you'll see that we're confident about gas safety compliance, we've done, we've looked at that very carefully, and that's compliant. Electrical safety, we had a number of inspections that were outstanding there, and we reduced some of those. As always, access to tenants' homes will be in some cases challenging for us, so some of those will have been passed to the housing management service. Water hygiene, we have appointed a contractor to undertake all the surveys that are required. And with fire safety, we have got all of those high risk fire risk assessments up to date, and have identified the remedial actions that were required from those. Lives, we were confident about compliance, and asbestos, you know, we've got that number known as self-referral. So in addition to undertaking a number of those, we've established a health and safety compliance board, that will oversee the delivery and compliance improvement plan, and, you know, we're developing a suite of dockings to support that. The regulator has confirmed that it has the level of assurance it needs in the actions that we've taken so far, not to take further statutory action against the council.
Thank you. Just so that before I bring in the next councillor, as indicated, I'll just go through the list of those that I've seen so far, so the hands don't need to come up anymore. So I've got Haynes, Maxwell, Paul Thomas, Carlow, Everett and Sands. So councillor Haynes, please.
Yeah, just on the risk management, the risk on page twenty, I can see that you've started laying out the most critical risks to the improvement plan. But what I notice is missing from that section is an idea about the timescale of when we would expect to see that fully created project risk register? Thank you, councillor Hayne. So that project risk register is under development, and we're expecting to have that review for December, with all the data that's needed, and that will be part of our project regulator in December.
Thank you. Councillor Maxwell, please.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for councillor Harris. I noticed you've taken responsibility and apologised to the tenants and leaseholders for what's happened, a number of them who've got in touch with me, and congratulated us on your swift response. It's a funny, haunting answer. Do we think we've done enough?
Thank you, councillor Maxwell. It was my job, once the issues were found, to support the executive director of Communities in the decision to report to the regulator. It was the right, and it was the only thing we could do. We've taken great care in communicating with our tenants and leaseholders, and we've done that in a number of ways. You're aware that two letters have gone out to each resident of the, or tenant or leaseholders, trying to set the situation out very clearly, and giving them a number of ways of contacting us if they wanted clarification, or they had real concerns. We've done the direct mail, I've done an article in the TLC, which is delivered to residents, to tenants and leaseholders, and of course, we've had our website with the information on them. I think now it's my job to lead from the front, in driving this improvement plan forward. We're already investing in computer systems, which will make an enormous difference. We've got staff who are absolutely committed to sorting this situation out, and we've got a number of senior officers here today who are working very closely on this subject. I sit on the compliance board, which meets regularly, I'm there with senior officers, we can monitor what is happening, where we need to put our priorities. So I do think that I am doing as much as I can, but it's paramount that we keep on good forms of communication throughout this whole process.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Councillor Paul Thomas, please.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Can you explain in more detail the role of the health and safety compliance board, in terms of driving the necessary work through the months ahead?
So councillor Harris explained, our board will be chaired by myself, attended by the chief exec, by my colleague Graham Nelson, portfolio holder for social housing and portfolio holder for resources, alongside us will be senior colleagues from finance, risk and property communications and monitoring officer. So I think that's a reflection of the, you know, the level of seriousness that we take around this issue. Board will meet every monthly and prepare a report for the regulator, each month the regulator's meeting will follow on from board. It will provide the strategic leadership and direction that's required to manage health, safety and compliance across this area. And it will have some specific responsibilities, which include oversight of the delivery of the compliance improvement plan, ensuring there are sufficient staffing and financial resources in place to get the plan delivered, oversight of preparation of requirements for the new building's safety development, changes to fire safety legislation, and also a new resident engagement strategy, regular review of the KPI performance report relating to this area, and review and management of corporate building safety.
Thank you. I'm just going to come in with a supplementary to that before I bring in councillor Carlow. In relation to the board, councillor Harris rightly talked about the communications that got out to tenants and leaseholders, and I just wonder, that is one group that is not reflected in the membership of the board, and I wonder if there is some scope of involving tenants and leaseholders somehow in the improvement journey, and whether that, whether that could be, could be considered? Thank you.
Probably two answers, if that's okay. We already have a tenants' improvement panel. They meet in their own right, they invite me to go along, which is really nice. We are, Lou and I are going to go to their next meeting to fully explain the situation, and we would expect to be giving them regular briefings along the way, so I don't know if he wants to come in.
Yes, thank you. In addition to that, we will set up a regular communications programme with our tenants and leaseholders, and part of the role for our communications manager on that board is to pick up that and to kind of design the process for doing that.
So although not directly involved in the board itself, the fact that you're going to their meeting, they have a way of inputting their voice into the process, that's the thing that's really concerning slightly there.
Most certainly, and, you know, some of the, well, they are all, I think mostly tenants, and they've been heavily involved with their own meetings, but they also attend national meetings as well, things like ARCH, the Association of Retained Council Housing, so they have a great depth of knowledge.
Thank you for that. Councillor Carlow, please, next.
Thank you, Chair. The report before us clocks a way forward, but I'm not very clear that we've got the full information to be able to assess whether all aspects have been covered. And this goes back to the relationship between the city council and MPSN, and also back to the contract, really back to 2013. So my questions are under three headings, please. The relationship between MPS and the city council, the legal footing it was on, and the responsibilities that were on both sides. Secondly, the change of responsibility in terms of writing the contract, checking the contracts, cabinet overview, and checks carried out. And then thirdly, the liability for compliance checking, does this sit with the council or MPS? The checks that have been done, who checked whether someone has done the work, et cetera, et cetera, when the contract's been honoured? It would be, I endorse the proposal that we scrutinise further, because I think we need to look into, I think we need to understand the background, we've got a way of going forward, as stated, but we haven't really got the narrative of how we actually arrived at this point. And to be certain on this aspect, but all other aspects of the council's contractual work, I think we need to have a much further detailed scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carlow. Can I, Louise, do you want to pick up some of that? I think there was a reference event to cabinet as well, so.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I can make some general comments about contract management at this point, and I'll ask Lou to pick up some of the specifics. So good governance and assurance is at the heart of every good organisation. And since I started in the council last January, I've placed an increased emphasis on improving governance and assurance across the council, including oversight of major contracts, and I can point to a number of areas of improvement. Recruited a whole new leadership team, which began in April this year, and through that recruitment process, was clear about the importance of governance and compliance and assurance. So that covers a range of areas, in terms of budget management, risk management, audit, performance reporting, health and safety compliance, contract management, so the overall assurance piece. And that's been reflected in performance objectives. I think the fact that we're having this conversation today shows that this new approach is working. So if Louise wasn't getting under the skin of the contract with MPS, we wouldn't be talking about it today. So Louise has spent a large proportion of her time since she started at the council actively managing those contracts. And other heads of service are reviewing their services, including the contracts that they're responsible for and how we manage those. We've made improvements in terms of how we manage our wholly owned companies, we've set up shareholder pounds to strengthen the management of those contracts with both NCASL and NRL. And heads of services are having regular contract management meetings with the managing directors of those companies and their teams. Other improvements we've made, CLT, the corporate leadership team of the council, meets on a quarterly basis as an assurance meeting to look at a range of governance issues, including budget, risk and audit. We've put in place a corporate health and safety board, which is intended to provide greater assurance for health and safety issues across the piece, not just regarding health and safety of council housing. And further work is in training to look at contract management, I'm having a discussion with the monitoring officer about making sure that it's across the organisation in terms of that top contract by value, by risk, and we will be taking forward work to look at what does a good contract management meeting look like? What's the degree of consistency across the council? So I hope that gives some general assurance of the weight I'm placing on this issue and the importance of it.
Thank you. Councillor Waters, did you want to add anything?
So I think in terms of some of the further information that councillor Carlow would want, about this could screen and the range of issues that we have to address, the structures that chief executive has described in some detail, we've already touched on, I think will provide that information. So, you know, one can say, well, let's do a historical deep dive and find out what's there. Well, the reality is, we know what's there, and we own matters of administration for the shortcomings in the compliance regime. We have partners, of course, for the joint ventures, and ultimately, we are the client and we are responsible for the monitoring of those contracts. You know, we will have further, we will have further discussion on some of those issues, I guess, when we go below the line. But for the specific point, everything that we would need to know in terms of putting forward a solution to those problems, will emerge through the iterative work that will be done, the regular importing back, and the opportunity then to ensure that we have the resources to deal with the compliance issues that were identified, and to reach 100% compliance within the time, the broad timeframe that's been given in this report. What I would find, I think what we would find unhelpful, given in one of these regulatory calls, and everyone in this room has, the immense amount of work that has to be deployed to make sure that we get this right and in a timely way, means that to separate from that absolutely essential function, which is the safety of our tenants and our leaseholders, to do a historical exercise, would detract from the resources that we need to do this really important work. So this has to be a forward-looking agenda, and that's the purpose, I think, of testing whether there is, you know, sufficiency in this, in this report. Two, you're going to come on to cabinet later, I believe it does.
Thank you councillor Waters. I'll just give an indication of who I've seen at the moment. I'm not going to take any more hands at the moment, because we've got councillors Everett Sands, Viv Thomas, Driver, Galvin and Hayes. Once I've gone through that list, I'm then going to invite the chair of audit to say the words that he wants to say, and then we'll look at going around the next round of questions. I'm very conscious that we have, in essence, around about two hours for this meeting in total, and those below the line section as well. So without further ado, councillor Everett, do you have a question please?
Thank you Chair. It's regarding the work with the regulator, so I think it should be aimed at Louise, I think. In terms of your comments about the oversight and the delivery of the compliance in appointing contractors in particular, but in terms of regulators deciding not to take statutory action at this point, in the future, how will we be working with the regulator for compliance, maintaining compliance?
Thank you. I've mentioned in a previous response that as soon as we became aware of the compliance management issues, we approached the regulator to make this referral. We didn't want to wait, we wanted to do that at the earliest opportunity, but in doing that, we were recognising that we didn't at that time have the full picture. And we were waiting particularly for the final report from Calton Sealy, which we didn't see until October. So we've been working with the regulator, providing information in detail as it emerges. We set out our plans for improvement during meetings in late August and early September. And as said previously, the regulator has confirmed that they have confidence in the plan, the personnel, the proposals that we have for strengthening skills and capacity, the council's financial position and our commitment to delivery of improvement. We're planning to meet with the regulator on a monthly basis during the period of time in which we return to full compliance. And our first meeting, our initial meeting with the regulator is at the end of this month. A report from board will form part of our reporting to the regulator from December onwards.
Thank you. Councillor Sands next, please.
Thank you Chair. I've got two questions. The first is a practical, nuts and bolts question, and the second one relates to compliance. We talked about electrical, gas and water safety a while ago, and who after a piece of work has completed updates records on individual properties? Are these paper updates kept on file, or are they computer files, something for example? Several years ago, I had a resident have a charging point for their mobility scooter installed in their bungalow, and I would assume that there'd have to be some sort of records kept, that so we know which properties vary, or the variations between different properties, and what needs to be kept on record for future tenants? And the second question, will the cost of achieving compliance have any effect on existing HRA work streams? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I'll take the second question, and if it's okay, my colleague David will pass the first question over to him. The cost of achieving compliance, so the majority of the money that's required to deliver the improvement plan should have been spent each financial year, as those checks and works fell due. I mean, what we have in fact is backlog. Because that hasn't happened, to deliver the plan, we will need the funding specifically to be made available over the next period of time, so the next 12, 18, 20 more months. There will inevitably be some additional costs, because we need to do it in a much shortened period of time. The high priority nature of the work, I mean, it is the most important thing that we have to do, means that we may have to consider reprogramming some planned works over the next 12 to 18 months, but that will be pause rather than not do. But actually, delivering the plan and our planned works programme is entirely dependent on contractor and office capacity. So you know, that's really where the position is.
Thank you David.
Second, thank you. In terms of the certification for compliance areas, they should all be recorded digitally. So we should have a digital record of all of the inspections and any remedial works that are undertaken against each individual property. There were some gaps in that at the moment, but we will ensure going forward that all of the records are fully recorded in a digital format, and they'll also be stored in UPRNs, so we have full access to it in full transparency around that. And the other piece of work that we've got to do is that where are we, are we operating work on individual assets, if we need to inform the stock condition database, how those works, because that will impact on future work as well.
Thank you for both answers. Thank you. Councillor Viv Thomas, next please.
Thank you. My question is, what are the routes available to ensure that properties by tenants with fees entry, we as landlords will be able to complete and work needed? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I'll ask Vivian initially that question, thank you.
Thank you councillor Thomas. There's basically two areas where we specifically need to get into residents' homes to carry out the inspections and the tests, and that's in relation to gas servicing and electrical testing. The other areas are primarily, we're working in the communal areas of blocks. In terms of both of those, we have a very well developed process for ensuring that we gain access to the property. In both cases, the contractor involved makes three attempts to actually get into the property, so makes appointments or seeks to contact the tenant to make appointments. Where that fails, the case of the property is passed over to the housing management team, and they make every effort to gain access through whatever means possible, so texting, telephoning, visiting the property, making to make contact with the tenant to gain that access. Where that doesn't work, in relation to gas, there is a very clear process where we basically go to, we seek to obtain a warrant to force entry, and we need to go to court for that. We follow the due procedure to do that, and that's actually set out under the Gas Safety Installation and Use Regulation 1998. In terms of electrical testing, it's not quite the same process, it's the same up until the point at which the housing officer has continued to fail to gain access. So the current legislation is slightly different, so what we do is we work with the law to actually secure an injunction to be able to gain access to the property. So we go down a different route, but it's still using the legal options that are available to us, to enable us to gain access to that property. In reality, in both cases, once we start the legal process, that's often acts as a trigger for the resident to actually engage with us. And obviously, that's our much preferred option, we're always seeking to avoid legal action when we can.
Thank you councillor Harris.
Thank you. Just adding one point is that when we know somebody has a food entry for us, or perhaps constantly not there, we will, housing officers will work very carefully and look at individual cases to see that perhaps that person might have a support worker, so that we can work with them as well, so that we can have an easier routing, rather than we go, the legal route is our last resort, we'd much rather work with residents anywhere where we can.
Thank you for that. Councillor Driver, your next, please.
Yeah, Chair, one more question, isn't there, I've been asked anyway, but I just want to know, as a tenant myself, and I have received letters from City Hall telling me the situation when this call on, so I'm quite helpful, and I hope the other tenants discover, will you, is there a way that tenants and leaseholders can have a voice? I mean, maybe you're worried, can you pull up City Hall and say, I'm really worried I didn't get a check, or, I mean, is there a way for that? And can I also ask, while I'm here, someone I'm getting another chance to weigh in, this meeting's called on, have we got enough money in the HRA to actually cover this? I understand there's a demand to treat with £1 million and others, and just one other thing, have we paid for this before? This must have been in the contracts to start with, so the jobs haven't been paid for the contracts to be done.
Thank you, yeah councillor Harris.
I'll start off, I think this will be John. Thanks Viv, and I'm glad that you found the letters useful, because we tried really hard to put as much information as we possibly could in those letters. And, you know, I just sort of, I received one. We gave people a number of ways of contacting us. There was information on our webpage, they could make a comment on our webpage, they could email us, they could phone us. So I think we did everything we possibly could to give people a number of avenues that they could use. But I think the strength of the letter was, it was so self explanatory, that it did all lay most people's concerns. They were sitting in black and white in front of them, and it didn't seem to cause them to, you know, it gave them everything they needed, but some people do like to phone up just to check, and I quite agree, probably like yourself, I knew that my house had my gas checked last year, I know I didn't electric check, so sometimes in the mind you know where you are.
Last week I remember, thank you. Gas was last week.
Excellent, glad you were in. And in relationship to whether the HRA has enough money, I think the simple answer is yes, but and no, my box are expanded on that one.
Hang on.
Yes, we've got a really ambitious business plan for the HRA, so we do actually commit some of these reserves, because that I'm going to talk to you about, but fundamentally, we've got a sort of cash position on the HRA, approximately £44 million at the moment, but we have got commitments against that, ranging between £15 million and £30 million, depending on how the delivery of the capital programme goes. So there are some big and ambitious commitments against that, but we are in a healthy position in relation to the reserves.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to add anything? Thank you for that.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, I've just answered the councillor Driver's final point. So the checks, inspections and assessments that we've identified are those that haven't been done, and they haven't been done, you know, that's why we're here. If they identify works as a result of those checks and inspections, then we'll undertake those because they're essential and necessary, and this is not work that's been done before.
So, okay for you councillor Driver? Yeah, thank you. Glad we're talking about gas safety checks, I'm not at home for my gas service in this afternoon, because we're having this extraordinary meeting, so. Yeah, I'll have someone in the house, so that's fine. Thank you, councillor Galvin, you were next, please.
Thank you. So just to be back on the point of the resource, looking into this, and then I've got a couple of questions on that, on the wider issues. So obviously, it's a lot of money, £2 million, even though we've got that resource there apparently, but it's a huge amount of money to find out of nowhere, and have to pay on things that are really basic. I'm glad that lots of tenants did get letters from, but this is electricity, water, gas, fire, lift, asbestos, things, it's Legionella, the world of people. And the whole thing is a huge raft of safety that hasn't happened. So what I need to know is, how can we be absolutely sure going forward? And how can we ensure good governance in the future around this area? And also, apart from the £2 million, it sounds like other works will be affected. So that's another really big thing, so I'm glad to hear it's being dealt with, but I think we need to really look at the magnitude of what's happened here. So my question, are you aware of the LGSS internal audit and risk management report from 2019 to 2020, that said there was an absence of robust contract management? I expect you are, and there's more in that report, there's much more specific. My question to Louise really, and then there's one also to Gail. So Louise, why do you think no one was aware of these issues before, these compliance issues before? And are there likely to be other things that you look into in the future that will come out? So, and to Gail, do you feel adequately prepared to sort of look at compliance, to look at these areas as a cabinet member here? Do you feel, how did this sit through the nerves so badly?
Thank you. Who would like to begin? Louise or Gail? Louise, thank you.
Thank you Chair, thank you. So I think that in the report, we have set out the very high level findings of the Calton Sealy report, and I'll just run through those. So Calton Sealy said that the policies and procedures are either missing, entirely or needed review, limited oversight of compliance performance and no clear accountability for undertaking health and safety compliance work is in place. There is no clear and consistent mechanism for logging remedial actions and closing them out. We have in place, as I've talked about in the report, a contract between council and MPSN. And at the beginning of this session, I talked about, you know, some of that is not as clear as it could be, the contract terms and conditions. But, you know, ultimately, the council is responsible for the health and safety of its homes. So we're clear about what's wrong at the moment, and what we need to do to put it right. So the recommendations in the report are building us some resources, some funding, some skills and expertise to get this right over, you know, the period of time that we've set out.
Thank you. Councillor Harris.
I suppose building on what Louise is saying, is that we've recognised that we need more expertise than the council. We are going to certainly do something about that, some of the expertise is sitting in the chamber today, but there is more to come. And, you know, I have to rely on experts to advise. We are moving forward, we know what we've got to do, the processes will probably be in place, so yes, I do feel able to do this.
Thank you. Councillor Hayes.
Yeah, I've just got a couple of questions that we cut from sort of things earlier on. First, I think something Louise said about this being something that she checked when you were appointed, wasn't it? But do we have any idea why nobody prior to her appointment was aware of this? Were all areas spot checked when you came into the role? And if not, why was it this one that you picked to make that spot check on? Were there any clues that this was the one that needed that kind of checking? And on the point about tenant involvement, I mean, it's really great that we're involving work with the tenants, you know, that's going to be a really positive step, but, I mean, I guess I don't understand why this wasn't done at an early point? Because, I mean, even since it was made public, there's been, I'm sure, opportunities that we could have done an emergency meeting with the tenants and spoken to the leaseholders, and that sort of thing. And I think as well, just on the tenant, just on the board as well, the one that's been set up to deal with this, I think it'd be really good, like councillor Wright said, to have some tenant involvement formalised onto that board. I don't really recommend that recommendation, but perhaps also to have some oversight from other councillors as well, outside of the cabinet roles perhaps, I don't know whether that fits with the chair of audit or the chair of scrutiny, or an opposition portfolio holder, I don't know, but I think it'd be good. In terms of, obviously, we need to be really transparent, we need to really, really work on building trust, whereas it's getting eroded right now.
Thank you councillor, for those questions. Who would like to pick up answers there? Thank you Louise.
Thank you Chair, I think I got all back, but no, I think I've got it all. So your first point about, about kind of me getting into the role and why this area, I mean, what I'd like I mean, what I'd like to say about the housing service is that, you know, we've got teams of really dedicated people in the housing service, doing really difficult work every day. It's a challenging service to work in, and it's very frontline. And there's some areas of the service that, that are performing really highly, and others that need some support and some changes around, you know, particularly I T and other, and other elements of, of service, they, they require some improvement. As a new director, you know, my housing background tells me that in the kind of hierarchy of importance, the first thing that I needed to make sure of, because it is, you know, the most important thing we do, that I needed to make sure that compliance and health and safety management was, was there, and that I could be confident in the way we were dealing with it. So that's the reason that that one's at the top of the list. In terms of management board, which will you say? Councilor Waters is going to be there.
Councilor Waters.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chair. And so the administration has this, our responsibility to sort it. We're seeing demonstration today of the effectiveness of the scrutiny function. And the reality, of course, is that the high degree of transparency, which is embedded into the process going forward, with the regular reports to the cabinet on compliance and performance, K B Is and so on, is obviously available to all members, is available to the scrutiny committee, and to bring to its work programme. And obviously, when we have cabinet meetings, one of the, as we'll see later on this afternoon, opposition representation is always present. A cabinet meeting is enabled to speak to and ask questions on any of the reports that come forward. So I think the robustness of scrutiny, which is what colleagues are asking for, is already well embedded into the system. And I think it is really important that those functions used, as it will be very effectively, to hold the administration to account and also to comment and understand the progress that is being made. And if there are any, any issues where things are falling short or less than clear, there's opportunities exist for their own existing structures.
Thank you.
And, and the final point, Councilor Hayes, around why didn't we inform residents earlier? I mean, we were of the view that we needed to establish a clearer position before we did that. We were working in the background, of course, contacting those residents where we were, where the electrical inspection was outstanding, of course, we were getting in touch with those people. So we were, we were kind of mitigating risk in, in that way. We were undertaking fire assessment when we knew they were outstanding. What we didn't have is the kind of full picture of, of, of the compliance management function and what that meant. So we felt that it was important to get that baseline position clearer before we wrote to all of our tenants and legalists.
Can you answer some quick follow-up? Just to clarify, because obviously before that, I know councillors were informed in October, weren't they? And council staff and press sort of took immediately after that. Could I just clarify who was aware before that meeting, where councillors, I don't know what position councillors were, and I believe even some members of the ruling group weren't aware? Is that right?
Thank you, Chair. So I can confirm, and I think Councilor Harris mentioned this earlier, that, that the leader and the deputy leader in the role with the portfolio of social housing were aware and were, were consulted around the referral to the, self-referral to the regulator. And there was a discussion with some cabinet members in, in late in the summer about the emerging issues. And then, as you say correctly, the, the other, the other information was cascaded in the way you just brought up.
Thank you for that. So at this stage, I'm going to invite the Chair of Audit to come and give a statement to us. Yeah? If you could come down here. Just so everyone's aware, the purpose here, Chair, I want to say something, members could then seek application as though we are, we are asking any questions. And then my, once that is, is finished, time-wise, we'll then look to consider moving below the line to exclude the public, to, to look at the exempt appendix, before we then come back above the line to do any recommendations. So we're, we're fifty-five minutes into the meeting at the moment, so. Councilor Rice, Chair of Audit.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for having me along. It's good to see you working to audit and scrutiny. I'll be as brief and as quick as I can. I thought it was important to, you know, demonstrate some of the work that the audit committee had been doing, and then obviously just take some questions. It's good to see audit members here, Council Stigley, Council Driver as well, who historically have been on, on the committee during this time. I've just taken a few minutes, a few, few pointers from the minutes. And so to pick up initially, points made by the Chief Executives earlier, it's great to see the, the corporate leadership team are obviously working in a new and progressive way on these kinds of issues. But it's important to point out, so going back to the internal audit report from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, so it took us up to October quarter two, these are all minutes in the public domain, they're available on the council website. The committee considered the proposal to postpone the review of N P S contract management and sought reassurance that there was no significant risk. The committee was advised that the audit committee would be one of the, this audit would be one of the first in the next audit cycle. However, there was sufficient coverage from a previous audit to provide assurance for an audit opinion. So it just shows that kind of already back in, you know, back in that period of time, you know, we were looking, we were already considering kind of contract management and, and issues around, around contract management within the council. And so when we move on to thirteenth of March eighteen, we had the draft internal audit plan for the eighteen, nineteen cycle, and we looked to look at commissioning, at commissions and contracts. So audit had twenty days put aside for contract management, and the review areas identified after discussions with key offices include contracts of refuge, repairs and maintenance, grounds, streets and trees, N P S and waste management. So those are the ones that were considered by, by corporate leadership team of the time, and those were the ones that would, would be important to be looked at. So just, just to roll around a few, later in the year, again, so as part of that process, we had a contract management of housing repairs and responsive maintenance, and that came back unfortunately with limited assurance and control and compliance. So at the July twenty twenty meeting, the internal audit annual report for the nineteen, twenty cycle, contact, speaking about contract management, it said, "The absence of robust contract management arrangements for key contracts of the council has directly impacted on the C A E annual assurance." It goes on to say that "An internal audit review of contract management arrangements concluded that the control environment and compliance assurance was limited with a total of eighteen recommendations made. Internal audit has not received any response from management regarding the issue of this report. Therefore, there has been no agreement of the numerous recommendations made, no timetable for implementation presented. Examples of weaknesses identified as part of the audit review include a lack of evidence being retained supporting incentivisation shared for the council, annual open book reviews not being completed, and multiple issues regarding the collection and monitoring of key performance indicators." That's all in the annual report, and as I say in the minutes. So you can see that, as far back there as July twenty twenty, that's a year after we commissioned the work, this is six months after the report was made, that you can see that there's massive alarm bells there about one area of contract. And, and so, you know, you, you, you know, we're very lucky that we have cabinet members, Councilor Kendrick attends, as well as, as resources and finance, and obviously work back with all the members of the cabinet administration to highlight those issues and progress those with, with the administration and C I T. Again, March twenty twenty-one, we got Waste Services contract, they got a limited assurance. In the minutes of that meeting, I did raise concerns as to whether there are greater risks around a wider set of contracts. And within, within the same minutes there, I, I said the Chair had concerns about contract management, I'd been surprised at the passive management of the waste management contract, and the fact that the incentivisation scheme had been implemented in twenty fifteen, but issues had not become known in six years, not until audit effectively investigated. During discussion, the Chair said that performance and the act of support report was a fundamental lesson, but there had been audit reviews of three contract management areas which had raised concerns. So the two aforementioned and one regarding our housing company previously. The, the business, sorry, I said, there did need to be more work to provide assurance on contract management across the council. The interim audit managers said that the directors had not identified contract management as a risk in their specific service areas. The business relationship, if you say, at the same meeting, there was a programme to review the large contracts, it would need to be kept under review, but the level of coverage was in line with risk at this stage. Two of the largest contracts had now been audited. This was a company with a lot of work on performance management and improving government's arrangements across the council. So I do pick up on the points that the corporate leadership team had made, where, you know, we can see them documented today, presented to you, that ultimately, the issues that we have come across in this very serious area are being addressed, and that systematically through the council, the, the C I T are looking at potential areas of risk and, and sort of regularising and understanding the issues that surround contracts that we have. But I, I, you know, it is, it is surprising that, you know, the, the audit obviously is doing its good job as a critical friend, starting to look at contract management. But we've had a number of contracts, you know, and we can go right back to Conwell, I guess, till twenty eleven. And I do think that the points made by councillors earlier about needing to look historically at the contracts we have, I think we have an abundance of, you know, evidence here, where we've got three contracts that are looked at, and none of them were satisfactory. And it does, it does beg the question that we need to really go back and look at throughout, throughout our history of the contracts that we've had, so we can identify the risks that may have transpired because of that, and the costs. We're looking at two million cost today again, because contract effectively, you know, has not been completed properly by the contractor, but that we've not actually had the oversight of that contract throughout. I mean, as, as before any questions, there might, there may or may not be, but, you know, you know, ultimately, kind of going right back to kind of, you know, I can remember kind of covering the, the fire safety at the time, when the tower was, you know, when the tragedy at Grenfell occurred. I remember asking questions of the then head of Netherland Housing, and, and I was looking at, sorry, yeah, 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 just issues around, will the, will the council be willing to have their tower blocks independently assessed? And the responsible fire safety checks are undertaken independently by N P S Norwich and the Fire Service. All the assessments and plans are currently being reviewed, and the findings will be shared with residents. But what we're seeing today is there's issues around fire safety. We, we, I'm getting assurance from the head, head of Netherland Housing back in twenty seventeen that these systems are being assessed, but yet we see in the interim time that clearly there, there's issues with, with compliance checks happening. So, you know, I, I'm not sure that work has really actually happened to, to the fullest that this council would like to see.
So, Councilor Rice, can I?
Yeah, so, so, so I, so I just would like to conclude that ultimately, you know, we need to look at these contracts. And first and foremost, we need to implement these changes and, and conduct that to, to make our residents safe. But I think there is a fundamental issue here in the contract management in this council, stretching right back. And, you know, I think, I think it's unfair to the taxpayer that we establish exactly what liabilities we, we've been exposed to.
Thank you, Councilor Rice. Before I bring in the lead of the council on, who no doubt has some comments he wishes to make on this. I have a, I have a question that I guess is prompted by your reflection on reasons that have been had at the audit committee, some of which I was a member for, and then I had a paper that wasn't on it, but I'm now back on it. I guess that question is, from, from the work the committee does, is it, is it your sense that there needs to be an increased resource for internal audit to pick up some of these things? Is it a resourcing issue that's, that's stopping some of this, this audit work from happening?
I would say that the way that the corporate leadership team are now looking to address the underlying issues, I, I wouldn't say that that was particularly necessary now, but I think, you know, the, the corporate leadership team, you know, as, as responsible for risk at the council may have, have an answer for you on that. Ultimately, I think in the situation we were in, where we're conducting these investigations, that, that additional resource might, might have been beneficial. And ultimately, in, in, in order to identify any of these underlying issues, audit absolutely could be a tool, and if we need to provide additional resources, then I'm sure that those could be released.
Great, thank you for that. Councilor Waters.
Yeah, good to see you, Councilor Cross. So one of the things I, I want to have a second agree with you, is one of the last comments that you, you made in your remarks, which is, our first priority is to sort out these compliance issues. And, and that's been a narrative I've, I've pushed, as we all have, good afternoon, in terms of the emergency, dealing with these issues and, and putting resources in. I think one thing that's, that's missing from your, your narrative, which I can probably address some of those bigger questions about contract compliance and inadequacies in that area, is this decision that was taken in twenty seventeen to bring to an end the joint ventures when their tenure, as it were, was finished, and of course, with, she said that the environmental services and the remaining services are coming in and will be with us by April, April the first next year. So I think that's been, you know, a recognition that we can do this better ourselves, and there are reasons illustrated in, in, in a report that we, we had before us. I think beneficially, that is informed by, you know, a very much more robust set of structures and looking in depth, as the Chief Executives said, of, you know, contract management issues and compliance issues and governance issues and transparency issues, so that, you know, those, those council-controlled companies will be performing effectively to deliver the objectives that that has a council. I know, and this, this is just a couple of points, and Gail may wish to, to comment. After Grenfell, of course, we acted very quickly, spent £2 million on ensuring fire safety in, in our tower block. And in relation to waste services, are you talking about news in a northward wide scheme as opposed to, you know, the, the bins being empty? I wasn't clear whether you were talking about the, the, the northward wide scheme of which we're part. I don't know. I mean, all, all I was going to say, if it is about news, of course, there's been a lot of work that's actively done by basically all waste companies across the country to deal with the fact that, you know, Chinese, the Chinese are not taking, as it were, any old waste, and that we have to find ways of making sure that we can comply and deal with all the landfill issues by finding some local solutions around the gate price. And, and that has now been pulled together, and that's been a, in a northward wide initiative that's been collectively addressed, obviously including us.
So the question is, is it better for news? I didn't hear any other question in that.
Yeah, but it was only, it was only the, the fact that you, you mentioned waste services. And I was just wondering if you were mentioning waste services about, you know, the contract that we specifically had with Liffa, or you were talking about the northward wide news scheme, which is about, you know, the collective disposal of waste. I wasn't sure whether it was one or the other, or possibly both. But, you know, it's, it's just a question to the council.
You know, well, thank you, thank you for the question. I mean, my response would be, I would need to go back and look at the report. I think at audit, it's not really, we aren't really looking at the top level, we're looking at compliance, and, and also whether or not the policy, whether or not it works, and again, whether or not it's being complied to. So I couldn't answer that. We do have officers there, and they may be able to answer that for you, but, but, but I couldn't tell you that off, off the top of my head. I could get an answer. but I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head. I could get an answer back to you if you like.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. I'm going to bring in the chief executive at this point.
I mean, just thank you. Just quickly, on the last thing, my understanding was this is it was a bit of contracts, was what the Audit Committee. If I could just make a couple of comments. So I've always been someone who's embraced internal audit and seen it as something that we should be using to improve as a council. Audit, internal audit is not there as something to catch us out. And I think, you know, it's clear that colleagues on the senior management team share that view. It's helpful for the Chair of Audit to kind of acknowledge some of the changes and emphasis that have happened. We've also put in place measures to improve the capacity capability of internal audit, kind of reflecting this new approach. I mean, I can't comment on anything that happens before January 2020. But I can go back to some of the things I was saying earlier around, you know, it was always the intention, once particularly the new executive director team came in, that they would look at their services and the capacity within their services and would identify any gaps. And clearly, that process has been happening and will continue to happen. And in respect of housing, we have colleagues, you know, sitting here today who have been brought in precisely because executive directors have been looking at their services. Our Covid recovery plan was published last year, talked about how we were going to look at service door services and review them for a number of reasons, because the world has changed, the behaviours of our residents have changed, expectations have changed. And those service reviews have begun, and new heads of service are looking at their services and looking at what needs to change. And what they're doing is identifying areas of really high performing services, but areas where we need to improve. So I think over the course of the next few months, throughout the next calendar year, you'll start to see those services coming forward, those service reviews come forward for decision in terms of change, which requires either a cabinet decision or for council decision. So in terms of where we are as a council, you know, those changes that we've put in place are starting to come to fruition, but there's no council in the country that delivers a perfect service. What we've committed to is to review our services and look at how we can make them better.
Thank you, Stephen. Does anyone have any questions or clarification to the Chair of Audit? I've got time for a couple of those. Councillor Galloway, then there comes Stutey, and then we will then have to consider moving on to the next bit. Thank you. Councillor Galloway.
Thank you for your outline. It's been useful to have and to see how audit works and has worked through this. Do you think the Audit Committee should have an internal audit investigation into this and other contracts, sort of showing where the responsibility is laying on contract management particularly? Because although obviously we're moving forward and we found this out, we're looking forward, we're all doing forward thinking, can't move forward from a position of not knowing what happened. It's not a reasonable position to take. We'd have to sort of really understand where we are as a council and how this has happened. I don't know, scrutiny can be involved in that. It's a really important part of good governance of this council and being transparent, so people can see what's actually gone on and will go on. But my question is, do you think Audit Committee could have an internal review, an audit review of this piece of work?
Thank you for the question. I mean, in brief, you know, since we started to do some investigations into contract management and we discovered glaring issues, which obviously alarmed me as the Chair of Audit, I consistently said that we should be retrospectively investigating all historical contracts to establish exactly what risks and liabilities, what reputational risks we've had, what financial risks, what risks to our residents have been occurring. But I think you pick up the point there, that really, you know, for that work to be undertaken, to actually look at that in depth, would be the work of the scrutiny committee. And of course, as audit is that tool that can assist the scrutiny committee by doing that kind of investigative work. So I would personally, not as, and as the Chair of Audit, I would welcome that work to take place, because I do believe that's the right thing to do. But I do pick up on the point about moving forward. And I do want to pick up on the point that the chief executive has said, you know, from a personal perspective as Chair of Audit, I've seen a massive change in the approach to these kinds of issues, the implementation of better working practices. And where I have been feeling insecure about the actions of the council in the past, I feel much, much more assured that the work that we are now undertaking will put us on a solid footing for the future. But I think the scrutiny committee should do a proper look at the issues that we've experienced.
Thank you, councillor Price. I've got, I'm going to put a guillotine on this in six minutes' time. I've got three more members who've indicated, so if we can be allegro with our questions and answers, that would be great, please. Councillor Stutey is next.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I don't have a direct question for councillor Price, but I'd like to thank the Chair of Audit for coming. And I'd like to propose that we do have a few more questions, genuine questions, before we go below the line, because this is a public meeting and I haven't had an opportunity to ask one yet. So if I could do that now?
Yeah, absolutely. Please do that now, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we've discussed compliance issues today, but I know that other parts of housing services aren't working well delivering award-winning developments such as goldenness food and cutting edge services. So this is a question for councillor Harris. As cabinet member with a greater perspective of the service for which you have responsibility, please can you comment on how other areas of the service are working?
Thanks for the question. I think I'll build on what Louise was saying earlier. There's parts of the housing department which are working so very, very well. We have, I mean, I'm alone to sort of start sort of being too specific, because I don't want to miss anyone out, but we've got the girl standards for our home options team, we've got the rough sleeping team, who have been so successful in bidding for money to help people get off the streets and have proper housing to live in. We've got our tenure neutral disabled adaptations team. We work so well with registered providers, because although we've mentioned some of the housing that we're doing ourselves, we can't do all ourselves, but we can work in partnership with other registered providers, and we have a really good working relationship with them. So we've got sheltered housing officers who really know their tenants, you know, I can go to them and say something, and they'll, yeah, there's a lot of family members, really. So I think, you know, we've got officers who are doing such a fantastic job. And I want to be there to support them and to continue to do that. But for those who are feeling slightly disheartened, I think Louise and I have a job to do to support them so that we can read on this. So, you know, as I said, there's a lot of really good stuff happening, and we need to focus on the future. We need to get this right, and we're absolutely focused on that.
Yes, thank you. That reminds me, Mr. Cruising has had in recent years how we are, how we say the support to prevent homelessness is one of the most successful in the country.
Thank you. I'm going to prioritise those councillors who have not asked that question, given the time and given that we do actually do, we do need to go below the line. Councillor Huntley, you haven't asked a question yet, and I'm sure you'll hang on.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much, Chair. This isn't directly to the Chair of Audit, thanks again. Firstly, I just wanted to get some clarification on something that was said earlier. We heard about the tranches of letters that had gone over to tenants and leaseholders. Could we perhaps be told what feedback had come from that? And secondly, I'm going to ask, well, the decision to assign each action owner is a welcome move in creating a robust system of compliance. My question is, how will actions be signed off? By whom will this be assessed? Thank you.
We were really concerned when the first letter hit the door with the matter. We didn't know how people were going to react. So we set up as many information channels as we possibly could. As I said earlier, it was on the website, there was an email address, there was telephone numbers. We even arranged on the first Saturday morning to have someone bang the telephones, because we were concerned that people might have been at work and that might be their only opportunity to be able to contact us. Since that first letter was sent through the channels, which were all quite specific about compliance, and that wasn't just general channels, we've had less than 100 contacts. Not all of those were even about compliance. So I think it shows that, you know, we got the information out that people really wanted and that we were here for them, if they needed to talk to us or to contact us by email. But, you know, we were doing everything we could. So, and I think that showed from, you know, what people have said to me from conversations with people, they were reassured by the letter, they know how hard the council does work, and probably like Keith and myself, we know what checks have been done regularly. So they were reassured. But I'll let you answer the rest of the questions by then.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Huntley. So I think in terms of assessing what actions are required, then the two members I have here today and colleagues at NPS and new resources that we are aiming to recruit will do that work in assessing the actions required. You know, we have already mentioned we've identified some gaps in skills and expertise in the service, so they'll identify them. They will be responsible, you know, assigned actions, there will be an owner who will be responsible for delivery. Ultimately, it will be the board that will have oversight of the programme and the delivery.
Thank you. I need to just kind of quick show of hands for those people who have questions that they want to ask that are below the line. So below the line hands, please. So I've got three, just trying to gauge some time on that. And I think councillor Huntley, you possibly need to leave the meeting.
It would be about 2.30.
2.30, okay, that's fine. So that's, that should work. And I've got three, four more people who've, I believe, shown that interest in asking above the line questions. So I'll take those, then we will go to a vote on going below the line to take those questions. So councillor Harris, I knew you'd indicated a while back in response to possibly Chair of Audit.
Yes, I suppose, please, a chocolate in my hand. It's only a comment, really, because councillor Price mentioned the money that we spent on our high-rise flats after Grenfell, and it was approximately £2 million. But that was work that which we identified after extensive recall by NPS. It was a work that we had to do. None of our high-rise flats had external cladding. It was things that we felt we should do. And I think it was money very well spent and was well received by the residents. So I'll just leave it to that and save it on.
Thank you. Councillor Sands.
Thank you, Chair. I sort of took a seat at the audit table this year, so I've been enjoying the process. So, but it makes me wonder, you know, how much as audit members we share responsibility in this. I think it's great that we're taking the risks very, very seriously and taking action on them. But is there a need perhaps to revise the audit conductance business to ensure that this type of is discussed and listed for future? For example, perhaps additional training for members of the audit team?
Thank you for the question.
Yeah, just to respond to that, thank you for also identifying that need for training. It's something that I've been advocating for about three years, and I think that improving skills on the Audit Committee is absolutely fundamental. As you all know, councillor Sands, our job is to make sure that there is policies in place, that policies fit for purpose, and that they're being complied to. Where the link with having members like councillor Kendrick, who is a cabinet member, and also comes and graciously joins us on the committee, he is that conduit back to the administration. He can be feeding that back. Of course, the members are there, the chief executive is welcome, the leader is welcome to attend any other audit meetings. So the issues that we've been highlighting through contract management through the years are there for all to see. And then it's about the case of when is actually going to take place. And I'm pleased to see that the new corporate leadership team have come in and instantly seized that. But historically, you know, that perhaps could be picked up earlier. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. Councillor Giles, please.
Thanks very much. Councillor Waters did briefly allude to these services being brought back under local authority control in the spring. But I wondered if, I'm not sure who is responsible, possibly Lou, could elaborate some examples of how local authority direct control of these services can improve things going forwards, both in achieving compliance and in preventing, you know, circumstances like this happening again.
Thank you, councillor Giles. I think as Councillor Waters has mentioned, you know, the benefits of insourcing NPS to the council and transferring NMBL to the new company was set out in this case in 2020. I picked out just a few of those points in the report and referenced those. So we talked in the report about greater direct influence and control over how services are provided, that it will remove a layer of the management processes between the council and the services, and that it enables simpler governance arrangements to be put in place and gives us more direct oversight and management performance. So I think they're the key ones for me.
Thank you. One supplementary, if I can ask councillor Waters whether this illustrates the folly of compulsory competitive tendering introduced by the Labour Tory Government in the 19th?
I can go back further than that, councillor Giles. I can go back to the fact that it is, and kept my teeth on compulsory competitive tendering. Yes, it's been a long and I think rather arid journey, but what is clear is that councils of all political persuasions see the benefit of bringing their services back closer to them and through that, through enhanced local authority control models. So I think that's, that's very, very, and again, it's been an extremely difficult time for local authorities in terms of the significant reductions in their budgets over the last decade, saving the blessings of a Labour administration nationally for 13 years prior to that as well. So, yes, I was fully concure with your observation. And thanks, councillor Giles.
Thank you. For that, councillor Haynes, your question, please.
Hi. Yeah, I'm going to have a sort of connection with the questions slightly, sorry. One of them did come up, has already come up a little bit, about the training need. And thank you about that for the all members of the Audit Committee, because we've, there's been a couple of points mentioned about the importance of the role of the Audit Committee, the effectiveness of the scrutiny committee in this. But, I mean, do we feel that councils generally have these skills? Because the composition of the Audit Committee and the scrutiny committees, as we all know, changes each civic year. People substitute in on and off. And if someone's coming into this meeting as a substitute, do they have the skills in scrutiny? So I think there is a need for wider training. Also on stuff like key performance indicators, does every councillor on the council understand what a key performance indicator is and how to read one? Does every councillor on this council have a reasonable grounding in contract management? It's difficult for us to properly monitor and scrutinise the work of the council with the chopping and changing committees if we're not given this training. So I don't know if that's a recommendation, that perhaps more training can be given to councillors on these sorts of functions. I also think as well, it's difficult for us to do our job without good access to information as well, isn't it? But I don't think it's been clear or long to members and to officers as well, in some cases perhaps, exactly who is responsible for a contract being carried out. So I guess my question is, how can we make that clear to people? Can we put something on the website, the internal website, perhaps the e-councilor? Can we have a training need on that as well? And also briefings, can we have a briefing on specifically, a regular briefing specifically on housing? I've been trying for months to get a briefing with the head of housing. It was an issue and I've been turned down multiple times. So I'm asking here, I guess, So I'm asking here, I guess, can we have more regular briefings? And maybe that's a recommendation as well rather than a question, I don't know. And just to sort of round off, something that definitely is a question, if you're all getting frustrated with that line of thought. How much will the council pay for the consultants to rectify this situation that had been referenced in point eighteen? Let me just scroll back to what page that is, on page eleven. Because there's a reference about that we've commissioned Calvert-Saden, the independent experts, but I couldn't find anything on how much we paid for that advice. Thanks, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I can, I'll take the question about the cost of Calvert-Saden away, if that's all right, Councillor Haynes, and share that. I don't have it to hand. On the statement about, you said about briefings, I hold a regular briefing with opposition councillors, which my senior team attend, and as you know, you're invited to those. And I believe that we have put first briefing in for you, me and Vivian to meet to have a briefing about a housing service.
I just got, I think my point on that is I've been asking for a briefing specifically about the housing service since June, I believe. And I mean, the community services ones are all well and good, but the runtime, you've got, what is it, fifty minutes at the next one to cover such a wide portfolio, it includes housing and other things. I think this shows the importance of housing, it's such a big area for the council, it's such a big part of our income expenditure, that I think it justifies its own separate briefings.
I'm slightly confused because I thought the answer for Louise was, you now have a scheduled briefing specifically just to look at that? So yes, there was a problem before, but now it's resolved. Thank you. Right, it's two o'clock. I'm now going to move to item four. Item four is what we need to consider, whether the press and public should be excluded from the meeting due consideration of item five on the grounds that involves unlikely disclosure exempt information as specified in part one, chapter twelve, where the Government Act nineteen seventy-two, or being confidential for purposes of section one hundred and eighty two of that act. So could I have a show of hands, please, all those in favour of excluding the public? And those against? Okay, that is carried, so we'll turn off the live stream and we will be back, as they say. So if you want to wait outside, that'd be great, and then we'll call you back in a short bit. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome back. We're live now again. Great, thank you. So we're now back into the public part of the meeting. And the sole purpose of these last remaining minutes is to come up with any specific recommendations. So I've had shows of hands from, or councillor Draper showed his hand slightly earlier. So councillor Draper first, then Giles then I.
Thank you Chair. My recommendation is similar to the one which is carried up in this group. I would like to recommend that there's a report about scrutiny in the summer, probably, probably June or August. About the two companies where you should take them back in April. So that is the most well noted and the MP is not noted. So after April, let's give us a couple of others that the report should cover. So that might be my recommendation to the Cabinet.
So we've got a proposal for a recommendation that a report comes to scrutiny in the early summer, following the bringing those companies back in house or that work stream back in house in effect.
Yeah, the co-covers.
Yeah. Okay, I don't want any significant discussion on this. I'm actually going to take a share of hands on whether people are happy with that as a recommendation or not. So those in favour please indicate. Yeah, that is, that is carried. This is, we'll just sort of canter through this with recommendations and then we'll, we'll move to a vote in or no on those. Councillor Giles will be next please.
I was going to recommend this.
Okay, that's good. Multiple minds working together, that's what I'd like to see. Councillor Hensley. Thank you very much Chair. This has come up early on in the meeting, the suggestion of how we evolve a tenet improvement panel. So I'd like to make a recommendation that the Health and Safety Compliance Board regularly updates that tenet improvement panel. Yeah, so a recommendation that the board regularly updates the tenet improvement panel. Members indicate they're happy with that please. Scaring with the wrong glasses on but that seems to be, is he still carrying? Thank you. Councillor Galvin will be next please.
I know, I've just got to go shortly.
Yeah, do you have a cancelled hand?
Yeah, sorry, school run, I will have to leave in a couple of minutes.
I know you're not the only one in here so.
And I wanted to make a couple of recommendations. Firstly, that we should add compliance and safety in these things to the council's risk register. If it's not already on that, I think that should be a relatively easy one to do.
Sorry, I think that's compliance and safety.
Adding to the council's risk register.
Was it briefly, did you say?
No, because it obviously goes to the board then, doesn't it? We should add items about, you know, our compliance and the same, this whole thing basically to the risk register. To the time being. And also, I wanted to make one about training. I know that this has been brought up a couple of times. That we should train councillors in stuff like key performance indicators, in contract management. We should have some sessions on those because we're all responsible for this. I would also, I'd like to recommend that we have some more clarity on exactly who is responsible for contracts being carried out, who we can contact and with any concerns we have about contracts. It's not quite whistleblowing, but just to make it really clear on, you know, maybe internal sites, e-councillor or whatever, this is where we go with concerns on contracts.
Just that the recommendation is quite tightly worded. What, what would you like that recommendation to look like? How does that, how does that look practically?
Well, at the minute, I think it's quite difficult to find out information on, you know, who's responsible for making sure contracts are being carried out, who do we go to with concerns. So and I'm willing to be led by officers on where the appropriate place is to put that information is, but I think it needs to be somewhere that all staff and all councillors can access, which is why I suggested the Intranet or e-councillor came from.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a steer on that last one please in terms of, Steira?
My response to that is there is a, there's a structured chart and responsibilities for each director on the, on the website. So my, I guess my simple response is if you've got a concern about a contract in the environment area, say you go to Graham Nelson's team, if you've got a concern about a contract in housing, go to the Rimmer's team. So that I think is already there in public domain.
Councillor Hensley, do you want to have a comment on that where you think there needs to be a recommendation for more opportunities?
I just think that's very well understood for people who are quite experienced in how the council works, but for perhaps a new councillor coming in, it isn't. And I think it's a relatively simple fix that would, again, it's about trust and transparency and reputation, isn't it?
So I wonder whether that actually could simply be incorporated in what is in effect your second recommendation, which is around training. So we've got training on KPIs, contract management and various other aspects around contract compliance as an offer that's available to mentors. I would seem to pick that up. And or do you want to add something on?
Yes, I just wanted to quickly add, part of the work that Leah is doing, supporting the human strategy the Cabinet approved earlier in the year, is fundamentally looking at how we're mobilising the work of the community around what contracts we let and we're developing a human plan. So that will be published on our Intranet in the future. We just want to make sure we've got it completed before we do that. But that's all part of the fantastic work Leah's doing as part of our, you know, management structure, looking at governance around that. So we will be publishing a human plan which will be very clear which contracts are let and in tender process or just the date of which contract expires. So it would be a complete overview for everyone to be able to see.
Thank you. So we've got a recommendation which is adding compliance and safety to the risk register. Can I get a shout out? Leah.
Sorry Chair, I don't mean to be difficult on this one. I'm conscious some of those things are already in the risk register. And then perhaps it may be that it's more appropriate to recommend that Cabinet considers how compliance and safety risks are reflected in the risk register.
That, that wording seems good to me. Those in favour of that please show. Thank you. And then the other one was around, in effect, I suppose the recommendation would look to expand councillor trade to include key performance indicators, contract management and various other issues of compliance. A recommendation around that. Those in favour of that one please indicate. Thank you. And then councillor Galvin, you have some recommendations for us.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that we ask Cabinet to support scrutiny and looking at this going forward in order to fulfil its function, to help to reduce risk, increase resilience and bring decision making in the future.
Okay, I think if we pass the recommendations, the Cabinet is after him, which will be listed in the Cabinet report which you had in front of you today, it's going to fulfil that obligation. So we have the, we have the whole house in support, but we will do technically at five o'clock later or something. Any other expectations that the recommendations will be mounted by Cabinet? Councillor Galvin?
Yeah, perhaps it wasn't clear enough. The report, best support and it's good in as far as it goes at the moment. But I think to fulfil its function, good governance in this council, we need to actually look at what happened properly. So I'd like Cabinet to support scrutiny to fulfil this function, to do that. Not to take off the time away or anything, but to make sure that we actually get to the bottom of what happened. It was a really nasty shock out of nowhere and it's also very dangerous and very costly. And we need the scrutiny committee to actually be able to look at this properly, have the support of Cabinet to do that and fulfil the reason why we're elected.
Thank you. Councillor Charles, want to comment on that one please?
Thank you. Well, I suppose that ever I'd say at some point. I do think it'd be a mistake to take up an extraordinary amount of officer time trying to draw and prove records over the last eight years. I think the absolute priority at the moment has to be getting us up to compliance and ensuring that all of our tenants and leaseholders are safe. And I think once that's been done, then that's something that could be considered. But at the moment, our tenants and leaseholders' safety has to be priority for us. So I would like again.
Thank you. Just to, I mean, we have a proposal for us for scrutiny to be able, to have support from Cabinet to be able to fulfil its function. I would like to think that given that I'm the chair in effect installed by council and no one's moved above no confidence in me, that maybe the Cabinet does have the confidence in the committee to undertake its function. Councillor Galvin, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to be absolutely clear for councillor Giles that I'm not in any way suggesting that we shouldn't prioritise rectifying and sorting out this. So I'm not, I'm actually asking to look at it in detail to make sure it doesn't come again, especially as services coming in-house becomes really easy. Gross assets, contract management procedures, I think it's extremely important. And it's a reputational problem as well going forward. So people want to do well to take it seriously.
Okay, well, we, we have a proposal. Put that to the vote. If yours in favour, please indicate. There's two, ones against please. That is clearly lost, thank you. And do you have another recommendation? Councillor Galvin?
Do you, is not, is it in our, we talked about the audit committee having internal audit investigation. I think that was taken on board. And so that's, that's something we'd like to put on our list for, perhaps to be more of an order.
Chair, this is a point of order. I think the audit committee sets the same work programme as the process that are on our orders. So I don't think we can make recommendations to Cabinet to scrutiny committee, is that right? That is correct. We could, I suppose, technically ask Cabinet to ask the audit committee. That, that feels slightly round the houses, but that would be, as I understand it, probably the constitutional correct way of doing that. You can do the monitoring officer there.
Yes, in theory, you're right on that front. I'm conscious there's a couple of others in the room that may have a opinion on this too. I think the other thing we also have to note is that the audit committee does also not dictate the internal audit work programme. That's a discussion between the, between corporate leadership team, albeit they may seek to endorse the programme. So I'm also concerned about the practical ability to actually implement the recommendations suggested on that front.
That notwithstanding, councillor Galvin, if your proposal is to in fact ask Cabinet to ask the audit committee to. to ask the audit committee to consider that aspect of internal audit, would you like to have that formally considered or not? Okay, thank you. Does it... Councillor Galvin?
Yes, a couple of suggestions, please. The Healthcare Safety Compliance Board has got a number of members sitting on it, but I can only suggest that we have some opposition councillors, and this is all our officers, actually specify anyone from the opposition, to sit us on the board, I think that would be very helpful.
So let's deal with that first one then. We've got a recommendation to Cabinet to expand the membership of the board to include members of opposition groups. Put that one to the vote, please, those in favour. And those against? That is clearly lost, thank you. Councillor Galvin, next suggestion, please.
I think we've had today that the corporate membership team are looking at other contracts, or they will be doing when they have time. And it would be very helpful for scrutiny to have a report on any matters arising in relation to issues before us today, compliance and other gaps we may be facing.
I thought we had a recommendation or at least a commitment that we would be getting a report back anyway.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Not entirely, so... Yeah, great, thank you. So I think that one's already come, so yes, we will be getting updates. Councillor Galvin?
Can I perhaps rephrase what I asked before, if we ask Cabinet to request the corporate leadership team adds historical contracts to the internal audit plan, would that work? Just thinking through.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we've got a request...
Just a bit clearer than what I said before.
Has that a comment on the request cases, did we? Councillor?
Yeah, this is going to add, this is going to add a number of pounds and therefore potential for cost and resources to make this happen. So at the moment, that's not something that I can vote for. The role of audit is to ensure current governance and while it would be nice to look back at everything, you know, the resources to do this.
I think...
In fact, I don't wish to commit resources while we're opening this.
I mean, I suppose on that front, it is why I was pointing out that in the room at the moment, every chair of audit, the vice chair of audit, and a number of members of the audit committee. So that will have been heard and presumably could be discussed at a future audit committee anyway. Councillor Galvin, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I mean, resources, keep being mentioned, but I need to point out that it's going to cost two million pounds start, you know, the loads to sort this out, so I think it's to spend a safer duration.
Can we get a future, a further clarification on the costs and how that works out?
The point I was going to mention is that you've committed a discussion next Thursday, and councillor Galvin is having that discussion now. So I think probably we should, I mean, it's a cabinet meeting, in a short while, the recommendations that have already been made are needed to be presented, too, and we need to prepare a meeting.
I'm happy to wrap up, if there are no further recommendations. I mean, councillor Galvin, do you want to formally table something and we'll take a vote on it? No, okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll call this meeting to close. Thank you all very much. And those of you in Cabinet will be back in 45 minutes.